Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting. It is a rainy October 28th. Welcome. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I will start, I think, with announcements, starting with one that has always been important to me, and that is the Veterans Day service on November 11th in the Red Hook Memorial Park. It is sponsored by the Red Hook VFW, Post 7765, and it is always a very moving and solemn service in memory of veterans. It is at 7:00 on November 11th, and I hope that everyone who can attend will attend because it certainly is an inspiring service. The Association of Towns has sent a letter to announce that the training school and annual meeting will be moved this year from New York City to... Oh, wait a minute. Sorry.
From the Hilton to the Marriott.
From the Hilton to the Marriott, thank you. The Marriott Marquis in New York from February 14th to 17th. And anyone who is interested in attending that training should be thinking about it soon. They're looking for registration online or by mail for hotel reservations at the New York Marriott by January 22nd. So, that's important to keep in mind, and that general training offers almost all of the employees something on one or another day, and sometimes on numbers of days.
Did they combine that with the... That's where the justices used to go, and when we split it, they split it in half.
They were at the Sheraton.
No, they were across the street at the Sheraton. They have never been at the Marriott, as far as I know. Harry, don't cough on me. Do you want to have my water? Do you want to have a water?
No.
So, those of you who will think about registering, be sure and think about it, and do so by There is an announcement from WWHV-CASH. It's a coalition that provides free, reliable tax preparation to low-income individual families and seniors throughout Dutchess County and Orange Counties. It's sponsored by AARP Volunteer Tax Preparers, and if anyone is interested in training to do so, they are offering training beginning in the fall of 2015. So, in Dutchess County, call Linda Eddy at 475-7500. Use your skills to make a difference for those in need. Volunteer Tax Preparers Training Course. And seniors in the Red Hook area should look for the Senior Services Committee Senior News. It's a bulletin put forward by the committee. It's winter of 2015. It is packed with information for senior citizens and what to do in case of almost everything. There are information about recreation, local publications, about transportation, about community resources. The committee that is sponsored by the town board has really done a wonderful job of putting this pamphlet together. So, it's available at the town clerk's office. I believe it's available in the libraries and Tivoli Library as well as Red Hook. So, I encourage you to look for that bright pink flyer that is full of information for seniors.
And I think it's online. If not, we're sure it is.
And it might be online. Let's see if that says. It doesn't say on the front page, and I didn't look further.
Oh, I think that is online.
It's good.
And we have extra copies.
It looks like this.
We have extra copies.
And we have extra copies here at Town Hall. It's really a useful piece of... It's a useful document that is helpful to not only seniors, but seniors and their caregivers and their families. Okay. Excuse me. So, in a minute or two, we will open the public hearing on local law E proposed to override the tax levy limit for the fiscal year 2016. But while we're waiting for the clock to tick to that moment, I'd like to take a minute to introduce the new town assessor, whose name is Jennifer Warburton. Jennifer, would you come in and come to the microphone? That would be perfect. We have wanted to have you, and for various reasons of conflict, we've not been able to welcome you to the public, so here you are at last. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm reading the assessor's report. In the month of October, the town of Red Hook showed eight sales. Five were valid, three were nonvalid, all were residential, sales between $219,900 and $575,000. I met with Real Property Services Manager Stephen Hartnett from the New York State Tax and Finance this month. Several approaches and a systemic comparison were reviewed to see the equity and level for the town of Red Hook. This meeting was beneficial, and these values look very good moving forward. I've included this document for anybody who would like to see it in the report. I continue to update building permits and place values on properties with final COs. The assessor's office has submitted its 2016 budget, which is less than the previous year. The assessor office is requesting permission to attend a one-day seminar session in Batavia, New York for condominium valuation. The cost of this is $110. The seminar will provide the assessor six credits towards continuing education. The flyer is included. This is a reimbursable expense by the state. And that concludes my report.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Are there any questions, Jennifer?
No.
No. No.
Brenda?
Can't think of any.
You're settled in?
Oh, yeah.
Good. Good, good. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming by tonight, so everyone recognizes you. Your busy season is coming. So, we set a public hearing to cover the eventuality that something might come up in the public hearing for the budget that would require us to override the tax cap. As the budget stands today, we will not need to pass this resolution, so what I'd like to do is open the public hearing on this local law to override the tax levy. We've done this a number of times in the past. It's a requirement of the state that we, if we have any doubt that we might override, that we should pass this local law, or at least prepare the local law so that the public knows that we're considering it. It's really interesting, because I was driving in here tonight, I was thinking about how hard it's raining and how hard it rained during Hurricane Irene, and were there to be a hurricane Irene between now and the budget passing? We might very well need this local law to override, but at the moment where the budget does not require it. So, I will open the public hearing regarding the local law E proposed, and any comments about it. Okay? Any comments from the board?
So, the idea is that we would pass it even though we hope and expect not to use it.
Right.
One chance out of 100.
Right.
Well, maybe less.
And I think the idea is to leave the hearing open tonight, continuing it, so that should we want to make this law effective, we would have the opportunity to pass it. We aren't going to take action tonight, but just leave the hearing open and continuing.
Certainly until the budget.
Until the budget.
Until the budget, which would be November 5th.
The whole idea is just to make it...
Thursday night.
Should... But if you're not going to use it, you don't want to adopt it.
No, we're not adopting it. We're leaving it open for the November 5th meeting.
Can I make it motion, Lee Ruben?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
To continue, if I could just clarify, to continue to the...
November 5th.
Which meeting?
Budget meeting.
Budget meeting.
Right.
The time.
7:30.
Could you want me to read the public hearing notice?
Oh, I suppose you should really have the public hearing notice now that we've gotten all that off our chest.
Now that we're done, please. Notice of public hearing. That's okay.
I stepped on you.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on Wednesday, October 28th, 2015, at 7:40 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. To hear all interested person on a proposed local law E proposed of 2015 entitled "A Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit for Fiscal Year 2016." This local law is intended to permit the town to override the tax levy limit on the amount of property taxes that may be levied by the town of Red Hook pursuant to General Municipal Law Section 3-C, and to allow the town to adopt a budget for fiscal year 2016 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined in Section 3-C of the General Municipal Law. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the town board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook dated October 13th, 2015, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook, and this was in our newspapers as defined by law.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Do you think between now and the end of the year that I will get you in at the correct moment?
Sure. You've done it most times.
I'll try.
99.9%.
Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
So, that gives the background on that public hearing notice.
So, we're leaving that open until...
We're leaving it. We're going to continue it until November 5th without action, and that night, if we are not intending to override, we will take no action, and it will just simply be null and void.
Right, and that's the night we have the budget hearing.
That's the night of the budget hearing, right. Okay? Okay, so, I guess we can launch right into this, and the first thing that we see on the agenda after introduction of the new assessor is the Trails Planning Grant, which is going to be covered by Brenda Cagle.
Did you just make a comment, Brenda?
We did.
You did the public comment?
I did. I asked for public comment. I did it out of order, Bill. That's why you don't know. Brenda?
Okay, so, everybody has a copy of our draft plan as submitted by the consultant a couple of weeks ago, and it hasn't been posted on the website yet because it has yet to be presented to the stakeholder group, which will happen next week. So, the Trails consultant developed a website, and we got the word out about people submitting comments and taking a survey on the website. We postponed the grant throughout the summer because we wanted to get input from the schools and from the Bard students, and so we still hope to be done by the end of the year. And I have to say, we were a little disappointed in the response to the survey and the comments submitted, but also I have to add that the various sectors of the community were all represented, both villages, Bard College, the school, the CAC, Robert George Design. So, all of those people are on the stakeholder group and had an opportunity to submit their ideas on a map, which the consultant has collated and presented in draft form. So, next week, the stakeholders will meet and look at this and have an opportunity to comment, and then it'll go out to the public, hopefully before Thanksgiving, but we don't know yet. And so, there'll be a chance for the public to comment once again. I hope the response is better this time. And then, we'll have a final public presentation sometime before the end of the year, I believe. I think that's about it. So, we'll get this posted on the website next week after the stakeholders have a chance to see it. And, well, no. Do you have any questions?
Tell me again when the stakeholders' meeting is.
We're either going to meet on the 3rd or the 5th next week. We just did a poll, and what the consultant did was ask people for ideas about where trails should be and which ones would be easy to accomplish, which trails would be more difficult to accomplish, kind of their dream list with how easy or hard that would be to develop. And so, this map is a compilation of their ideas.
And forgive me, looking at the map, can I tell from this what appears to be priorities?
No, not yet.
Okay, okay. So, that's to be determined.
That is one of the end results that we hope to have. That is one of the deliverables, is a prioritization of the segments as well as report plans for a couple of the segments, so that we would be ready to go right into funding, funding opportunities.
Each of these black indicators here, tags on here, are a negative comment or a risk indication, right?
Well, or challenges. Challenges to be overcome. Yeah, and so, the green is the easiest to create, and the red is the hardest. And I think at the meeting next week, there will be a lot of comments, because, you know, I see some omissions, and some things have changed since this was open for comment. For example, the sale of Montgomery Place that's likely to happen could change how we develop some trails. And one kind of interesting thing is that the Bard College representative, Tom O'Dowd is his name, he's teaching a practicum to his students, and they're working on trails, so they hope to have designed what they would think would be a good village-to-village trail, and that will hopefully be incorporated, you know, depending on stakeholder and public comments. So, again, the goal is to be finished by the end of the year. So, get your comments in. When you have the opportunity, we'll get everything on the website, so it's easier for people to comment and advertise widely the public meeting.
Okay.
I thought, there was one thing that was kind of interesting that I noticed. She mentioned a Blue Way Trail instead of Green Way, a Blue Way, where she had a few possible places where paddlecraft could launch.
Oh, I see it.
So, it was kind of something we hadn't considered before.
Does that exist elsewhere along the Hudson? A Blue Way Trail?
I don't know. I haven't heard of it, but...
Yeah, there are a lot of challenges, aren't there, to all of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a lot.
Yeah, the Huckleberry Trail here seems to be one of the high points.
Hucklebush.
Hucklebush. It seems to, as far as I know, it's much of it's built over now and blocked off.
Yeah, but, you know, the interesting thing about that is that in other towns that we border, it's not necessarily so.
Uh-huh.
So, they're...
That's unfortunate.
Mm-hmm.
No, it's unfortunate for us. I said it backwards.
And, you know, there's opportunity to work with the other towns in those directions.
Uh-huh.
So, more to come. This is like the draft of the draft.
And Brenda, from your impression of the meetings, did it seem to you that what they were attempting to do is create at least one continuous trail somewhere that would be of benefit to people who wanted a good length of trail to travel?
Not, well, not necessarily. You know, that was Robert George's idea, and some, I think Bard is most interested in that, but it really is going to be taking everybody's comments into consideration, and also what's most doable, and what we want on the final...
Yeah, I just was curious, because if there are segments of trail that are doable prohibiting connections to the next doable trail, that doesn't help a lot, does it? Do you know what I'm saying? If you have a segment that's doable because of the lay of the land, and then suddenly there's a drop-off, I can think of several areas in Red Hook like that, where we want trails, but it would be a horrendously expensive trail to create because of the road, side road, and terrain.
So, it would be like a trail to nowhere?
A trail to nowhere is my concern, and I just wonder if they're looking at that as a drawback in recommending that as a priority, even though we would love to have them.
I mean, I would think so, and we'll listen to what the consultant tends to say, but I would definitely think that would be less of a priority.
Well, I will say this, that you have done more for making trails passable by way of the sidewalk that you have spearheaded than probably anyone else in the town, and I thank you for that, and it'll be a completed effort long after you and I have left these chairs. It's a wonderful legacy, Brenda, and I thank you for that.
But hopefully, it's still on this earth, Sue.
Still on this earth. I didn't mean to suggest otherwise. Right, right. Thank you, Brenda. Next on the agenda is a resolution that I forgot to get a vote on last time we discussed this, that the wetlands mitigation, Vosburgh has finished the bulldozing and soil transfer, and in order to complete our mitigation of the wetlands, we now need to purchase and plant trees in the new recreation park where the designated wetlands mitigation area is. And I meant to say, I resolve to do this. Do I have a second? And we did not vote, so I am asking for a resolution to do so, to spend $7,147 of parkland capital money for that parkland, that recreation space, as we had intended.
So, move?
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and I apologize that I did not follow through with the actual vote. I knew we all agreed, but there you have it. There's an actual fancy resolution here that I suppose I could read. "A Resolution Authorizing the Expenditure from the Park Funds of $7,147 for the Park Extension Project." Whereas pursuant to the master plan approved by the town for recreation park extension west of Linden Avenue is necessary to provide for certain costs relating to wetlands remediation, we resolve by a favorable vote of not less than majority that the town board authorizes and appropriates the sum of $7,147, or so much of such amount as shall be required therefore for costs of the wetland remediation program for the rec...park extension. That is what we just authorized.
So, move?
We did that.
Yeah, we kind of did it. I'm still going out of order, I'm sorry. Here's the resolution. I just received it, and I'll just give it to you for your record.
There's, we were going to transfer funds to do the roof of the pavilion. Is that...
Yes.
That's the next meeting to meet again?
Yeah, and that will be at the next meeting, on the supervisor's report. There would be, from the fund balance, there will be a budget adjustment...
Yeah, okay.
...to expend that money so that we can get that work done this year while it's...
We don't quite have the funds.
Before, yeah, but we know pretty much what it is.
We know very close.
Yeah, okay. Okay. St. Margaret's Committee Visionary Meeting, and this is something we've been talking about, so I wanted to just give you what we have so far. We've developed a kind of an invitation to people who have seemed interested in one way or another in what's to become of St. Margaret's, what purposes should we use it for, what kind of future should we be dreaming about for St. Margaret's. And I shared with you some of these names last week. I've added a couple of people to them since then. I don't know if any of you have thought of additional people, and if you have, you can tell me who they are tomorrow. We're going to send this out as a special invitation to those people on this list, but also wanted to bring it to the public's attention. I checked with Jim, who is the liaison to this committee, and we scheduled the meeting, the general meeting, here at Town Hall on November 18th, Wednesday, at 7:30, to have kind of an open forum and a visioning session, to get people's ideas and reactions to various ideas, and just have, you know, a way of saying, here's the building, the town is investing and keeping it safe and protected. We're investing in maintaining the lawn. There's a passive park there at the moment, and, you know, we feel it's important for the community to weigh in, and so, that's what this session is for, and we're hoping that not just these people on the list who have expressed interest, but people from the general public will attend that meeting. 7:30, Wednesday, November 18th, here at Town Hall. And that leads me to tell you that I had a call from Kari Fuer, who is the president of Red Hook Can, who came by to see me, and we talked about the possible use of St. Margaret's again next summer for the Arts, Red Hook Can Arts activities, and she's particularly interested in possibly two July weekends with the kind of thing that was going on there this year. I talked with John Kuhn and Kari about it. I, depending on what comes out of this meeting, I can't imagine that that would not be useful use of the space, since we have no immediate plans. So, she wanted to apply for some grant funding to do some publicity and so on for those two weekends in July, and I told her I would bring it to you for your thoughts. And I think most of us attended the Arts Festival that was there this past summer. I thought it was a great weekend, and I think she estimated as many as 200 people and all came to attend the various activities they had for that three-day, one-night, two-day period. I can't see any reason not to encourage Red Hook Can for similar events, but I wanted to get your sense before we give her a yes that we were interested. Anybody?
I would encourage her to go forward, just based on the experience we had. It was really very successful.
Right.
And there's no reason... And there's no reason not to do it, not to do it again.
Right, that's how I felt, Harry. Bill, what do you think?
Yes, I agree.
Oh yeah, they brought great energy to the site, I find.
Yeah, and good publicity, there were some wonderful articles about St. Margaret's, thanks to Kari and her team. All right, so shall we agree, maybe?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, I'll tell her it's unanimous then that she should go ahead and apply for funding for, I think it's two July weekends, I'm not sure they've identified which ones, but the grant needs to be in very shortly, so I will call her tomorrow and let her know that you feel, as I do, that that would be good use for that space. Thank you.
Sue, I added one name to that list.
Good.
Did you get that?
Yes, I did get it, is it the first one that I asked you about?
Yes.
Yes, I did get it and I believe it's on here, Brenda, down halfway under additional suggested numbers. And anyone else, it's a list that can certainly grow because it is the town's building and everyone should be welcome to that meeting.
Would it be wise to ask Wint?
Yeah, well, I've talked with Wint, I've talked with Wint about it and Wint is supportive of our use of the building for such art activities, he is seen on this list, I thought, but I don't see it, he's not here. I think because he said he did not want to attend meetings, but this may be an exception, he may be willing to come to this one. Yeah, he was on the initial list.
We've gone ahead without him on a lot of things.
Yeah, he did, he did meet with me about it and I feel sure that if he can come, he will come, but I will, I will put him back on the list, that definitely is an oversight. I can understand not wanting to go to meetings, but I will have Linda add before that goes out. Okay, thank you all. Regarding the biodiversity grant application, Teresa, I don't want to speak for you, but do you want to report on that? We talked about it very briefly in passing the last meeting, do you want to talk with us about the meeting that you had with Brandy Nelson and the culverts?
We have had several meetings on the biodiversity grant and it's due November 13th and we're trying to cross-reference work that the highway department wants to do with work that culverts that they've determined would be candidates for biodiversity rehab and in this short period of time, we haven't been able to complete that work, so we don't feel that we will be applying for this round of grant funding, but we've been assured that there will be a couple more rounds and one of the recommendations from the engineers that the CAC work with the highway department to develop a plan for the next couple of years to target these culverts that would be candidates for that grant.
Yeah, I understood that the grant was for improving the flow of natural barriers, right, and?
They're asking us to use a specific type of culvert, that's an open bottom culvert or two berry pipes so that you can have coverage through the pipe and that will enable the passing through of aquatic and small animals, so it kind of connects the different biological areas that may be cut off by the use of culvert pipes that we have in place right now.
Right.
So we're trying to target the ones that we have that are due for replacement, but still make it worth doing all of the work.
Sure.
And also to be able to put into the budget funds because it is a 25% match.
Right.
So it'll, it'll take a little doing, but I'm sure we'll find something and if we get the help of the CAC, then we'll have it covered.
Well, I want to thank you for taking time to meet with Brandy Nelson and with, and thank you to Jen Kavanaugh too of the CAC for meeting and discussing that, it's always worthwhile to explore grant applications, but sometimes either there's not enough time or the priorities of the grant don't match the need for the community, so thank you for spending time on that and good luck with the next time round. And that's all we have before board reports unless any of you has something that you wish to bring forward.
I answered the email that was sent out by, what's his name, Matt, David Matt, about community solar and I had another call from him today, we spoke and he wants from the town, he says his company is the largest community solar company in the country and so they are targeting towns and city, you know, public governments and asking to lease or purchase town land in that municipality and what would happen is they would, it has to be located close to, you know, certain high powered utility lines and so the town, the benefit to the town would be either a lease payment or if they purchased the land and then customers can buy into this and get a credit every month for 25 years. And so I asked him, had they had difficulty getting customers and he said never and so what he wanted from us was a list of town owned properties that might be appropriate, so with the board's approval, I'll give him that and he can, and then he'll let us know if any site is appropriate. Take it from there.
So town owned property?
Yes.
That would be appropriate?
Right.
Not necessarily buildings, but just land where they can set things on stanchions?
Yes, but also they're interested in roofs and I mean, we really only have, I think, one, the Highway Garage that might be appropriate, one left, but it sounded worth pursuing and it, you know, if you all are okay, I'll just, I'll give him that list and he can look them up and, you know, use his satellite data to determine.
No harm in looking.
Pardon?
No harm in looking.
Thank you for doing that, Brenda.
Yeah, I thought it was very interesting.
That sounds great, good. Okay, so on to board reports, I do not believe there's an ethics board report, there is a planning board report and I think, Jim, you're going to report that?
I've got a copy of it in my folder here, so. The planning board met twice in October, the board commenced and continued to review the following projects, a site plan proposal to construct a 6,000 square foot addition to an existing building in the TND CC district, Rook's Automotive, you know, across the street in Downways, an application to subdivide 26.9 acre parcel into two parcels of 3.002 and 15.75 acres, seven, four or five acres rather, and a lot line alteration to combine remaining eight and a quarter acres with adjoining part lands at 28 Stony Brook Road, clay hill subdivision and lot line alteration, an application to construct a 12 by 20 garden shed utility studio on 2.2 acres in the hamlet of Upper Red Hook. The board granted conditional preliminary approval to an application for a preliminary subdivision and site plan approval to create 102 residential units on 52 acres in the TND district, that's the Hoffman TND that we're all familiar with. The board granted final approval to a lot line alteration conveying approximately 0.32 acres of land from a parcel located on Freeborn Lane to an adjoining parcel located on West Curly Corners Road. The board granted a certificate appropriateness to replace retaining walls in the hamlet of Barretown. And that's.
Kitchen.
Good for the report.
Okay, and I do not have, unless one of you has, a report from the zoning board of appeals?
Well, they met once, I did not attend the meeting, at that meeting they reviewed one appeal, a request for a, an area variance which was a recta fence seven feet rather high rather than four feet in the front yard and that's considered an area variance and they met on the 14th.
So that's under consideration, Jim?
Yes, I presume, I haven't gotten a report from, I'm just reading the agenda, I got prior to the last meeting, I presume the public hearing will be set for their next meeting, which would be the second Wednesday in November.
Okay.
Is the way they used to do it.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so department reports, has anyone got an animal, Brenda, I think you would have that if there was one?
They don't have anything.
We have an assessor's report. It just occurs to me that if we did not budget this condominium evaluation that Janet is requesting, that that will have an impact on the budget unless we modify it, so we'll have to take a look at that. So I do not believe that, I do not believe that that is, either of those figures are in the budget for 2016.
Under.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's November 13th, I beg your pardon. Yeah, it's very soon, yeah.
That's an in and out, anyway.
Yeah, that's reimbursable by the state, yeah. Okay. All right. Is there an attorney's report perchance? Now here you see in your list, I thought we were going to do it during the regular supervisor's report, but this is included tonight by way of Ann's notes for approved budget adjustments. So you'll see in the general A fund to reduce the revenues in the amount of 24,395 total and we increase revenues in the amount of the same. In the B fund, you'll see a total increase in revenues of 6,054 and we increase the appropriations in that same amount. In the DB fund, there's an increase of appropriations in the amount of $260 and you'll see the increase in revenues to that exact same amount. In the waterworks, there's an increase in appropriations of $600 and that's a postage item. And in the Highway Garage, other funds, capital projects, 29,855 and that is site work, garage fan louver placements, you'll recall that we had modification of the Highway Garage in order to have the airflow in there improved and there's a top coat amount for pavement as well. And that's the total of budget adjustments and I think I would like to ask for approval so that we don't have it come back at us the next week.
I approve. Harry seconded.
Bill moved.
Bill moved, Harry seconded, all in favor. Thank you.
Some things are just clumsy, including me.
Well, you're not feeling well, I understand. Okay. I have the building inspector report, but Jim, I think you have it as well.
Yes, I do, right here. The monthly report for October 2015, there were 35 permits issued, 36 inspections, 25 COCCs issued, three complaints followed up on and a total revenue of $6,121.80 and of course the details of where all the revenues and the inspection reports and everything are in our, you know, the complete report that we've got here. There are many pages.
Yeah. I won't do anything other than to bring this up as a conversation for next time, but several of us have heard from residents who feel that the building permits should, the fees for building permits should take into account buildings that are lost due to a disaster, a disastrous event, either flood or fire. And an example would be the barn that burned on Hatman Hill Road that burned to the ground and the family lost all of the herd of goats and the entire barn itself. And so numbers of friends of theirs have, on their behalf, have said that they felt there should be an allowance, an adjustment, a consideration for building permits to be forgiven or at least reduced in the, in the instance of a disaster such as a major fire, if the building permit were in fact to apply for something that's of similar size or smaller. And so I have some information for you for next meeting and I just wanted to let you know that I'd like to talk about that because.
Yes, yeah.
You know, it could be a flood, it could be someone, someone completely lost a home and I know of one that could, that could have happened here in Red Hook and to say to them, I mean, it's a small amount in overall consideration, but nevertheless, I think it's the right thing to do for us to think about it, so. The fees were paid, it isn't that the owners of that particular property aren't looking for consideration, but their friends feel there's something wrong with that request to treat it as any other building permit and so I'd like us to talk about that and I'll give you some, I'll give you some background from other communities that have made that consideration that looks, you know, fairly straightforward and that we might model after. The Red Hook Police Department, Harry, I think you were to report this? You have it, okay.
There are many incidents on this report, it's for the month of September, there were a total of 110 incidents of every issue imaginable that you'd be expecting the police to go to, that included in those 110, there were seven people arrested and there were 28 tickets issued for the month, roughly one a day. There's no single incident that stands out, fortunately.
Fortunately, right, okay. Thank you, Harry. Teresa, would you like to report for the highway department, please?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Just wanted to talk about, to tell the board about the expected grant intermunicipal agreement from the town of Clinton that you talked with me about today that would be, an reimbursable amount of money to $17,500 because we're participating as partners with the town of Clinton, the East, the lead agency for a shared services Duchess County grant.
We applied with the town of Clinton, the town of Ireland and the town of Rhinebeck for a mini excavator or a compact excavator, which is something that we rent every year and when we rented, it cost about $2,000, the size that we had asked for in this grant would probably run about $2,500 and we use it for the entire month ditching and installing culvert pipes and it's a really, really handy machine, so under this grant, the four municipalities would get it for three months each and we did receive the grant and I believe the total fee for the machine, the attachments and whatever legal fees are required is $70,000, so a quarter of that is paid. So, a quarter of that is paid by each municipality, and then it's reimbursed. There's no match for this grant, it's fully reimbursable. So, they're working on an intermunicipal agreement right now to go with the grant, and it's really...
What are the four towns?
Pardon me?
What are the four towns?
It's Rhinebeck, Clinton, Mylan, and us.
How does that affect the villages, Teresa, I mean, like the village of Rhinebeck and the village of Red Hook? Do they get use of this, or how does that work?
Well, I think that's up to the four towns. Since they're not involved directly with the grant, it may be something where if we have it and they have a need for it, that we would supply the operator, but that's up to whatever comes out of the intermunicipal agreement.
So, and then, the four months each are really, nobody's getting the winter months, I would assume.
Well, you can use a compact excavator in the wintertime. There are other things that you can do with it. For instance, you could purchase a boom mower attachment and put that on the end of the arm, and then you can cut brush when there's no snow. So, there will be probably some kind of sharing worked out for the wintertime, but you can use it quite a bit.
It's based on a shared usage whenever needed, not strictly for months of, three months of use.
Yes, it's not, it's not determined exactly how that's going to be designated, but they've done it. The other towns have purchased a paver and a roller with two or three other municipalities, and they've worked that out, so this is a similar situation. But we're looking forward to it because we usually only get one month rental, so even if we get two months, if it's three months and one's in the winter, we're still ahead because we don't have to pay for that other than maintenance and insurance, which would be shared also. So, it's really a good thing for the town of Red Hook.
And it would have been $2,500 per what?
Per month.
Teresa, who's preparing the documents or the agreements?
I believe that the attorney for the Town of Clinton is, and they're going to give us a draft at the end of this week, which we'll pass along to you. And then, I think the legal fees are included in the grant request.
And it'll be owned by one of the municipalities. It's gonna be a home base somewhere, I assume.
Yeah, but I don't have all of those details because the grant was just awarded, so they'll work it all out. I guess whoever has the capability of storing it, you know, you keep it when you're using it, so.
And like for the village using it, you said it would have to be the town operator?
I don't know what the terms are going to be at this point in time. I know that the village uses a compact excavator quite a bit for their water operations.
Do they rent?
They usually have a contractor come in with a machine, so how that's going to work out in the future with our fishing, I'm not sure.
Good, Teresa, thank you for reporting on that. And I know that took some work to participate, thank you for that. I don't have a purchasing report for the month.
I don't either.
Yeah, okay. And Brenda, have you anything from the recycling center?
No, I don't.
Okay. The last then is for the department reports, is the Water District. Jim, you have that?
Yeah, I got the report from Hank here. This is out of the October 8 work session. The normal is 77,000 gallons per day pumped, and in September, we pumped 96,000 gallons per day. Used a little more water in September because the weather was still nice, so. The levels are fine, the chlorine's fine, the filters are operating satisfactorily, we have spare filter cartridges, spare chlorine on hand. There's 13 outstanding work orders for, you know, our operator that will be addressed this month, actually. Planned in '15 was a pipe replacement, which was completed. Crawford Associates addressing a couple completion issues with the contractor now. The well rehab has not been done yet, the reward, it was awarded to Boyd, and Hank sent him a follow-up letter on October 13th because he had not heard back from them. The VRI, they cut the vines on the pump house fence and so on, and they'll do it again in the spring. Dead hydrant flushing was scheduled for October 22nd, so I presume that has taken place. The turbidity meter needs calibration, and Carol ordered a kit so they can calibrate that properly. And they had a service line water leak at 10 North Drive, and VRI located and repaired that. And that's it.
Good. Okay. Okay, so then we have committee reports, and Bill, the first one in my folder is the intermunicipal task force.
Yes, the task force is the weekly meetings in October, prepared for informational meetings scheduled for October 21st and 29th, present the proposed local law for historic preservation, the September 19th, 2015 draft. The first informational meeting was held last week on Wednesday, October 21st, here at Town Hall, and the entire Town Board was here, was presented by Green Plan, and was considered a success, there was much discussion from those residents attending, approximately 27. And the next informational meeting will be tomorrow night, here at Town Hall at 7:00, again presented by Green Plan, and to discuss what the amended, proposed amendments are, and there'll be cider and donuts, right?
More cider and donuts.
More, yeah.
That's great. It was very nicely done, I thought, I thought it was well timed, good comments, and thank you for arranging for all of that. Bill, was there an Agonopam Space committee report?
Yes, the Agonopam Space Committee met last night. There was an interesting presentation by Nancy Guskey from the Tree Commission, about the subject of spraying and a tree on a citizen's property along Rokeby Road, south and west of the village of Red Hook, that apparently had been destroyed by some type of infection of a tree. And it was suspected that it might be related to a spray, you know, what they call Roundup, it's glyphosate?
Glyphosate.
Yeah, however you pronounce it, but anyway, it had been applied to the farmer's lot across the road from this person's property. So, it's being investigated, and there was a nice discussion among the members of the Agonopam Space about the subject, but it's awaiting an investigation by DEC about the effect of drift or whatever might be suspected. So, it was a very good, good conversation. They also brought up the subject of the agricultural fences law proposed, and so explained that, you know, the attorney for the town and I've talked about it, and it's on, hopefully be on the agenda in November, business meeting, and it's still a work in progress. And there were other, much other discussions too, but anyway, it was a very good meeting.
Good. So, you're suggesting that we put that on the agenda for the November 10th meeting?
Yeah, just to keep it, the board, maybe there'd be something available to resolve it at that time, or it'll be continued, but at least it'd be on the agenda.
Okay, very good. And that'll be Christine Shaw reporting on that?
And Bill.
Christine and Bill.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, very good. Community Preservation Farmland Protection Committee, there's been a meeting of the attorney for the town and the supervisor and the, one of the chairs of the farmland, of the Community Preservation Protection Committee, to begin talking about updating that plan. We talked about this last time, and that plan is expiring on, in the May of 2016, so we need to move forward with updating the plan, and Susan Asrati has embraced that task and will begin calling the committee together and prioritizing. Largely, the goals for the first plan have really been realized in terms of the amount of land that has been protected by the Community Preservation Fund. So, the map will have to be updated, and the thought is that it, they reconsider priorities in light of how much land has been preserved, farmland and open space has been preserved. So, she wants to call the committee together and perhaps even regenerate the committee with people of different interests, so we'll see. But Susan has wrapped her arms around it, as she often does projects, and we'll hear more about that in the near future.
I'll just say, one thing that they were talking about including in the consideration was the study that had recently been completed, I think with the CAC, in terms of the forestry areas, and the importance of that in the waiting.
The connectivity study?
Yes, right, so that, right, so those are issues that they wanted to consider in the goal prioritization.
Who mentioned that?
Susan.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just to consider, for the committee to talk about that.
That included wetlands biodiversity.
Right, right.
She's gonna be doing that in 2015 though, right? You're not gonna wait till 2000?
No, she's, she's beginning with the committee soon.
We're gonna begin to start now.
Yeah, yeah, because that's gonna, that's coming up really quickly. So, yeah, so we'll hear more about that very soon. Conservation Advisory Committee, council, is there a?
I don't have a report, and I missed the last meeting, but I do know that Lori was hoping to work on a solarized project with Northern Duchess Alliance. I'm not sure that's going to happen, but we're all hopeful.
Did you want to report, Sarah?
Yeah, I can tell you a couple things.
Sarah, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, so, CAC is working on the Solarize project, it's a grant that we get through Solarize Hudson Valley, I think it's called, right? And basically, the lead agency would be Northern Duchess Alliance. Red Hook CAC would be, there's another word for what we would be, but basically, we're proposing that Red Hook would be a hub community of several in Northern Duchess, and right now, we've reached out to Hyde Park, Clinton, Rhinebeck, and Mylan, yes, thank you. So, as we're hearing tonight, you know, it's sort of our natural footprint of close local partners, and that includes churches and nonprofits and businesses and all the municipal officials and the school districts. And so, the idea would be that we'd get money to, well, basically, we'd work with a third party that helps just spread information to all those different community partners about solar, whether it be like residential displays and community solar, and basically, the goal is just to up the amount of solar energy that's being generated in our area. So, we'll find out. So, the great thing is the deadline got extended, so we need a little bit more time with all those moving parts. So, we're hopeful that we'll have a good application to put out, but that's, I think the deadline's in the night, November 15th, so we'll be putting that out soon, and so if we hear anything back, obviously, we'll be letting you know what might be expected. But, you know, we have so many partners, it seemed like, you know, worth it to at least put it out there, and everybody would share responsibility for it, and there's no price tag for us other than the time and energy we put into it. So, that's the basic, and the other thing we were working on was on last month's meeting, which I also missed, but focused on the Sauk Hill community watershed partnership that's going on, that's a thing we're doing with Bard College, and I think right now, what we're doing, it's like a citizen science project, so identifying places in the town that we can start sampling the Sauk Hill and the tributaries, and just kind of get like a baseline of what's in the water, and, you know, I think in general, the sense is that it's really healthy, but, you know, just to kind of start getting a baseline and then continuing to sample and spread information about it, so that's the two big things we've been working on.
Great.
Yeah.
You know, you might find some information on that, and when my granddaughter was in school, for a few years, they used to go over there as a group and test the water in the Sauk Hill.
Yeah, I think Sue Ellis on our CAC was also part of that, yes.
It could easily have been, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They sampled a number of locations of the Sauk Hill, there were about 10 locations that were sampled, every month or every other month for a few years.
It was an exciting time to get dirty at school.
And I have one more report in my file, and that's the Tree Committee, and I think, Brenda, you were going to report the Tree Committee.
Did you want this read now?
No, when we get to correspondence, thank you.
This is their monthly report from October 28th. The Tree Committee joined the Hard Scrabble Day festivities in September, tree information was distributed, tree seedlings were available thanks to the care of and preparation by Linda Keeling. The fall raffle drew some interest, Doug Trout set up a video demonstration about the flourishing eagle population in this area. November 4th, about 70 trees will be delivered for fall planting. There are many different groups planting this fall, including the Town Tree Committee, the Village Tree Committee, the Rec Park, and the Village of Tivoli. The Town Tree Committee will be planting four trees and doing some maintenance, which will include some pruning, soil amendments, application of tree tone and logging. Anyone interested in helping plant should contact the group that he or she would like to help. I would like to thank the new members of the Tree Committee, Hop and Kathy Michael and Doug Trout, for their enthusiastic participation, they have brought new ideas and skills to the committee. I would also like to thank Karen Catterett, Ellen Friary, and Linda Keeling for eight years of outstanding service. So, Nancy will have one more meeting, and we'll really miss her, she's done such a fantastic job on that committee, and she's lucky to have some energetic members, and hopefully, one of them will step up and be, become chair.
That's great, she's, she's been an inspiration to all of us.
She sure has.
By the way, some of the trees in this town are absolutely stunning this, this month. Never seen such reds, they've been beautiful. Those new ones along South Broadway, those young...
By the Lutheran Church.
Yeah, they're gorgeous. Just amazing for young trees. Any other committee reports? I have nothing, anybody else? Okay, so, in your, in your folder, you will see a couple of items of correspondence. Brenda, I guess I'll let you start with the first.
Okay, it's addressed to the Red Hook Advisory of Environment Council, I guess they mean the CAC. Thanks for giving me the chance to go to this camp, gain more experience, and learn about the environment more. I went to the 2015 DEC camp in De Bruus, Week 1, I really enjoyed the time there. The main purpose for this camp is how to conserve our natural resources and to protect the environment. Throughout the whole camp, they were strongly suggesting and advising us to conserve our resources, especially water, and we had some debates concerning deforestation and returning wolves to New York. We also had some fun time hiking for seven miles, canoeing, fishing, fly fishing, and birding. They also taught us some survival skills in the wild and wonderful songs. Moreover, the food was really good. They also had something called ORT, or that encourages us to eat all our food and to have no leftover food. Furthermore, the cabins were really clean and the counselors were amazing. Again, thanks for that amazing opportunity, I hope I could repeat it again, thanks. How do you say R A G Y?
Rege, I think.
Rege?
I think so, I think it's Rege. Rege.
Okay, so I guess they, these, this family moved to Westchester, so they weren't able to come in person to the meeting, but we thank them for their thanks. I mean, we don't often hear after the fact, so that's a...
Right, right, that's great. It's hard to believe that letter was written by, it, how old? 10 or 11?
Was it fifth grade? No, middle school.
Oh, middle school?
Middle, middle school.
Pretty good letter for a middle schooler, that's great, that's great. And that particular scholarship was sponsored by...
One by the FW.
The FW, Post 7765, and I caught a mistake I made the last time by getting the wrong post number.
Oh.
7765 is the right number.
You have it indelibly remembered.
I do, and I don't know why I said the other.
Well, also, one by the Masonic Lodge, but I don't know which one or what the number is.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, also in your packet, you'll find a Carvis Finanz from Duchess County Sheriff's Office, talking to his... Office, talking to us about changes in administrative fees for the year 2016. And this is sent to us every year about this time. The fee schedule is applicable and updating. Contract that we had with Dutchess County Sheriff dated January 13th, 2004. We have not signed a contract with them, and I don't expect to do so in my term of office. The administrative fees are quite high, and they indicate that these fees may change after negotiations among the officials. So, the 2016 rate is not finalized in this letter. So, if you'll just make a mental note that, should anyone ask you, the fees are quite high compared to the hourly rates that we pay for police coverage, which is why we have not budgeted for this contract this year. Central Hudson sent a letter talking to us and wanting the planning board to know that there are some constraints on utility pole installations, should anyone come forward asking to do so. And each year, the list gets longer as to what the steps must be taken to actually have decorative pole attachments. And there are as many as eight steps before we can do it, but I just thought I would make that available to you to let you know that they have a process to appeal to them to install on their poles if you wish to do so. There would be a license agreement issued and insurance is guaranteed and so on, so.
What do you think about like flags on the poles or recents?
It says decorative pole attachments. It does not specify. It simply says decorative pole attachments. The following outlines the steps to be taken for installation of decorative pole attachments.
And local flags.
Or baskets or whatever.
Temporary attachments for utility poles.
So, if it's not decorative, then you don't need to go through all of this?
I guess. If you want it, you just-
Now we get into the debate what is decorative and what is not.
Yeah, so I just included that for your information. Should anyone ask you about decorative attachments on the poles, there is a process, and we are subject to it as well. And there is a letter from Dutchess Land Conservancy that draws attention to the Close Family Farm. As you will recall, we participated in an acre, in an easement for that farm, in 105.84 acre easement. And as has happened in the past, Dutchess Land Conservancy, the agency that is monitoring the easements, refers to us any requests for impact on that easement. And the letter, I believe you have a copy of this letter. Do you or do you not?
No.
Okay, so I think what I'll do is just read it. First, there is a letter from Mr. Christopher Close. Dear Mr. Collings, I am writing to advise you that we plan to construct in the Farmstead a machinery shed 20 feet deep by 40 feet long by 12 feet high, made of wood, painted barn red, with white trim and corrugated metal roof and earthen floor. Also, Starling Yards LLC, our tenants plan to erect a temporary tunnel 30 feet wide by 72 feet long by 16 feet high on agricultural land. It will have an earthen floor and meet current NRCS requirements. And there's an attached map to show where that will be located. This is a letter from Dutchess Land Conservancy to Mr. Peter Gibbs of USDA NRCS in Syracuse regarding the Close 105.84 acre easement. Dear Mr. Gibbs, this letter is to inform you that Dutchess Land Conservancy has received prior notice from the Close family for several intended improvements under the terms of the easement on the property. As stated in the easement, there is a 21-day notice period for improvements located within the farm complex. Number one, machinery shed. As indicated in the attached letter, the landowner intends to construct a 28 by 40 or 1,120 square foot machinery shed at the southern end of the Farmstead complex. According to the easement documents, such prior notice is required solely, quote, "solely to confirm" that any proposed new structures, enlargements, and/or replacements are located within the boundaries of the Farmstead complex, and that the aggregate footprint area, combined with all other existing impervious surfaces, do not exceed the allowed total. As stated in the easement, the permitted total of impervious surface is 6% of the property area, or 276,606 square feet. Based on the map provided by Mr. Close, I have determined that the shed will be located wholly within the Farmstead complex. Construction of the shed will increase the area of the impervious surface from 9,598 square feet, as stated in baseline documentation report, to 10,718 square feet, a figure that remains substantially less than 276,606 square feet. Number two, the high tunnel. In addition, Mr. Close has given notice that his tenant farmers, Starling Yards, will be constructing a 30-foot by 72-foot or 2,100 square foot, 2,160 square foot high tunnel, a temporary greenhouse within the easement's farm area. Under the terms of the easement, high tunnels do not require approval and do not contribute to the impervious surface total. However, the easement limits the total footprint area for high tunnels to 20% of the property area. So, we will be updating our records to show an aggregate of 2,160 square feet of high tunnels on the easement property. Please contact me as soon as possible, or in any case, no later than October 30th, if you have questions or wish to raise any concerns about this matter unless I hear from you. Otherwise, I will be sending the Close family a statement of acknowledgement soon after that date of October 30th. So, I report this to you, having received this from Art Collings, Vice President for Land Conservation of Dutchess Land Conservancy.
So, what they're proposing is approved?
What they're proposing is, what they're proposing is not objected to by Dutchess County. They're asking, have we objections? And they're asking USDA, have they objections? Because we all invested, so.
But they're staying within the previous determined boundaries in any case?
Yes.
So, it's hard to object?
Yes, right. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay. And that's all I have for correspondence. Anybody have anything they wish to discuss or no? Okay, so before we close, is there any public comment?
I don't have a comment. Just two quick observations I thought from Linda's report. It was encouraging that there were eight sales in the last month. I noticed from one of our local brokers that actually, we're on track to have more home sales this year than back in 2005, when the market was doing quite a bit better. And then the other thing, CPF, just as a reminder, because we tend to forget, but actually, it sunsets. We're already eight years into the process, but it will sunset in 2027. So, when we're doing the plan, we may want to keep that in mind. That's all.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? Okay, so I'm not going to entertain a motion to adjourn before going into executive session. I have, I have reason to meet with you regarding the hiring of a particular individual and would like to discuss it tonight. Is there a segment?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I know.
I thought she was younger.